July 8, 2021, will we all rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jamie, will you call a roll please?
Councilman Jeff Capel?
Here.
Councilwoman Jill Cole?
Here.
Councilman Lisa Wonka?
Here.
Vice Mayor Promote Javary?
Here.
Councilman Joe Leet?
Here.
Councilwoman Katie Schneider?
Here.
Mayor Mark Serken?
Here.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
A move?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a public hearing tonight, two of them, but one to consider the 2022 tax budget. The Ohio revised code requires governmental entities in Ohio prepare annual tax budget is just an estimate. It is available from the city, it'll be on the website again, it was available from the city these last few weeks. We need to present a public hearing and give any comments from the public. So are there any comments on the tax budget from councilmate questions?
Can we have a motion and a second to open the hearing?
Yeah, you can do that. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
A move?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions from council? None. Is there any questions on this particular subject or just the tax budget from citizens? Comments? None. I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Anything else anybody else would like to say about this? My councilmates will close this public meeting. We will later on hear the a public hearing, not closing the meeting. Later on, we will revisit this during Resolution 2021 dash thirty-two. So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
A move?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have another public hearing to consider approval of a concept plan needed development for a forty-eight point nine acre mixed-use development on the forward east campus of the PNG site in the Blue Ash North Sony District. This is ordered in 2021 point oh three. This would be the first, you know, I understand that the applicant would like to we're opening the meeting and then the applicant's gonna come up and make a request to change the date. So I'd like to have a motion to open a public meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dragon?
Thank you. My apologies. No, 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 I'm listening properly. So my partner on the proposed project was his personal wishes to come on. I was unable to travel to meeting this evening and we'd like to request council table this case until your August meeting if possible.
So do we have a motion to table the meeting for tonight and reschedule it for August 12th at seven PM?
A move?
I agree with the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So now I want to close the public hearing or we can, I'm sorry, let's table, we table it. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve amendments of June 10th, 2021?
A move?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any communications to council?
They're up tonight, Your Honor.
Any reports about site agencies? Aye. Management report will be made part of the public record. Do I have a motion to accept the financial report for June of 2021?
Seven yeses.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
We are all very sympathetic to the incident that occurred at Summit Park on June 21st. Several of us sitting up here have been touched by suicide in our own families. The architect and the city are already investing in options to make access to the outside of the structure more difficult. Please understand this is going to take some time to re-engineer the existing configurations. When we move on to hearings from citizens, if you wish to speak, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. If you have any materials to pass out, please give them directly to Jamie, the clerk of council. Please keep your comments as brief as possible to allow others a chance to be heard. Hearing from citizens is for us to listen to you and your neighbors. It is very unlikely that we will make any comments immediately after you speak. You need to have a chance to reflect on your comments, research the subject, consider city codes and legal issues. Sometimes we do revisit an issue brought forward in mislands. But council will notify you when three minutes is passed and at that point, please try to wrap up. Most importantly, let's all treat each other calmly and let this stop.
Thank you. My name is Koji Asari. Did you need my address as well?
Yes, please.
Address is three nine three eight Bainbridge Drive. Like I said, my name is Koji Asari. My fourteen-year-old son Tucker died missing inside the Summit Park Tower, two and a half minutes ago. Countless people have asked me and my wife what they can do for us. What I want to say is, can you bring my son back? Of course it's not possible, so I don't ever say it because I would just make our caring friends feel even more helpless. Council members, if you were to ask me what you could do for us, I will say this. Please help me make sure nobody ever falls to their death at that tower again. Please help me make sure that nobody has to grieve the way my family has. Please make something positive come from the loss of my dear son. You guys are not aware to stand this up, but I'll give you a picture of my son before you. I know that modifying that tower is not some magic solution. I know that the battle against suicide is multifaceted. Education, counseling, awareness, and that is extremely difficult, probably impossible to stop every suicide. But I ask you, don't we have a responsibility to do what we can to reduce it, to minimize that number? One way, and one way that you guys can, that you can help us is to remove the opportunities. Tucker was an amazing young man. He was a straight A student. He ran track. He was on the soccer team. He had a lot of friends. We just returned from a great family vacation. Whatever overcame him that day, it seemed to have come on suddenly. We obviously didn't know what it was. If that easy opportunity is not available, it can help them resist that urge. Help them go one more day without giving in. Give them a chance to work through whatever it is that is bothering them. Let's remove that easy opportunity. There must be a way to make that tower safe while preserving the aesthetics of the building. Of course, it will cost money. It certainly costs money. But isn't life priceless? If it saves one life, won't it be worth it? I don't have anything to have my son back. Please, I implore you, since you want things to be done to make that tower safe, make sure that another, that another father or mother, brother or sister has the standing authority to ask you for what I'm asking you. Please help me make something good. Help my son. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Ellering. I live at three nine seven three Bainbridge Drive. I'm here to speak in support of safety enhancements at Summit Park's observation tower. My family, our frequent visitors to the park, to enjoy the variety it has to offer. To create this one hundred thirty acre well-planned economic development piece, I wanted to delve into further, so I went to the Summit Park Blue Ash website where I read the Blue Ash promise. I learned a lot about what went into the park. We went through a master planning community survey. Passing along, there were so many steps. A lot of time, effort, and investment was put into this project to make it a regional attraction, quite the crown jewel. But safety enhancements must be made to the observation tower. Why wouldn't you want to protect your crown jewel? What about your restaurants? The businesses coming to the mixed-use development? Those that want to live in your luxury apartments, condos, and homes? They don't want Summit Park to have this reputation, an easy, accessible spot for suicide. Part of that Blue Ash promise talks about opportunities for young and old year-round with a focus on community, education, health and wellness, the environment, and entertainment. So I ask you, protect your vulnerable, protect your community. Consider the health and wellness by adding safety features to prevent an easy opportunity for suicide. I implore you to act quickly. Thank you for your time this evening.
My name, uh, my name is, yeah, I'm at thirty twenty three Caprio Drive. I'm just gonna give you a photo. I think if you're attentive, visuals are very important to me. Here's a picture of the Summit Tower and here's a picture of the safe tower that the kids are on, just to give you foundation.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Tardigan. I live at ninety-four five Congress Avenue, Lando, Ohio. But I work in Blue Ash and I pay in contacts to the city of Blue Ash. Two of my children go to school here. As a teacher and as a mother, I am greatly concerned about the lack of safety measures at the observation tower at Summit Park. I will never forget the first time, and only time, that I climbed the observation tower. We were enjoying Summit Park on a playdate with other families and at the end of the playdate, I took my four children, ages sixteen and nine years old, to the top of the tower. I was mortified to see how easily someone could force their way through the open structures or climb on the railing and scale the glass separation. During the climb, my own children remarked on how open the structure is and said that they did not feel comfortable being at the top of the observation tower. I'm sick to my stomach just thinking how a young person who was a childhood friend and the same age as one of my own children found a way to end his life at Summit Park due to the lack of safety measures that could have prevented his life and allowed him and his family to seek help. As we are all aware, the percentage of young people suffering from anxiety and depression continues to increase in our society. Talk to many of your teachers, counselors, or administrators at Sycamore schools. They will tell you how their students are suffering from anxiety and depression. Unfortunately, persons who suffer from anxiety and depression are much more susceptible to also commit suicide. I am not naive to think that the lack of safety measures at the observation tower was the only factor in Tucker Asari's death. However, the city of Blue Ash owes it to its citizens and visitors to modify the safety measures on the observation tower so that this is no longer an easy answer for our children to end their lives. If the safety measures on the observation tower are improved, then that makes it less easy for anyone to end their life. We understand that you want to provide a great view for visitors from the top of the observation tower, yet there are engineering solutions that would allow visitors to enjoy the view while keeping them safe at the same time. This park was, was a great destination for our family. Summit Park used to be the first place we thought of, and from Glendale, that we thought of for outings as a family. We loved to bike and walk on the various paths and trails. We loved to meet up with other families at various, at the various playgrounds. We came to Nanny Bell's after my daughter's eighth grade graduation. They stayed up past their closing time to serve twenty-plus families. My colleagues and I, we used to come to Summit Park for a drink at the end of the week or to celebrate some special events, but I'm sorry. We will no longer be able to come to Summit Park to spend time and money due solely to this charity event. I unfortunately have tickets to the outrun the park this month. I do not know if I will attend that event. I have talked to several families who feel the same. Unfortunately, local businesses at the park will lose this revenue source, but this is the reality. However, we all hope that the city of Blue Ash will make the right decisions to improve safety measures at the observation tower so that families can come back and enjoy the park without thinking, what if? Thank you.
Anyway, who else would like to speak?
Yes, I have Todd Trager. I live at one four six Congress Road in Wyoming, Ohio. My kids go to school here or did. My daughter was in preschool here. My son is still attending preschool here in Blue Ash. We always stop my son at Park on our way home after making a hug. Very difficult. I just, we have many supportive friends and family up there. And I just wanted to say that I called many of you. Thank you for speaking with me last week. I appreciate everything you're trying to do, everything that we spoke about. I know the family really appreciates what the police could have done and other members of the city of Blue Ash. I also ended up calling a lot of businesses in the area and spoke to them about what occurred and what occurred previously a couple of years ago. This is not the first time Summit has taken a left there. And stories there from restaurant workers about the last time. And now this happening again, it's chilled down to the bone. It's been very difficult for them. I guess to just do business as usual. So I just wanted to let you know also, as if you needed another reason, there are other reasons, other people affected by this that you may not realize. So thank you for this time. Please consider an upgrade to the safety at this park. Thank you.
Any yeses? And deepest condolences to the family and friends of this family. Can we move on to committee reports? Turn it over to Lisa Wonka, Chairman, Finance and Administration.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand two one dash thirty-two by Title.
A resolution adopting a twenty twenty-two tax budget.
Move to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two.
Okay.
Any discussion? Any none? Jamie, please call a roll.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilman Leet?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider? Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Wonka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-three by Title.
Amending Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, the twenty twenty-one position classification plan and the twenty twenty-one pay plan as provided for in Resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-three administrative rules and regulations.
Move to the dot Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three.
I beg.
Any discussion? See none? Jamie, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Leet?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four by Title.
Providing for the appointment of Andrew Westendorf to the Board of Tax Review of the City of Blue Ash.
Move to the dot Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four.
Okay.
Any discussion? I think Jeff, you had a discussion with him and Katie and I both, the Katie, but then I talked with us. We have a good choice. It's hard to have like an in-depth conversation about the Board of Tax Review, but I think we asked the right questions and found the right person to fill it. And, or would you like to swear in it? Should we vote on it first?
Yes, we should.
Yeah, that's it. That's, Jamie, call a roll, please.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Wonka?
Yes.
Councilman Leet?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All I have there. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to the standing and standing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to motion this setting a city council works session for seven PM on August 10, 2021 at the Blue Ash Municipal Building. Viewers conference room for the discussion of the proposed handle and corporate corner project, market analysis, the project element with the downtown strategic plan. Under, and second, anybody's voting yet? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody there? No need. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. I want to move to this place, business, lady.
I'm sure somebody will share the same sentiment, but good job to Brian and the Red Crew for the Fourth of July. I heard lots of complimentary, lots of compliments, particularly the drone show was a, was a new twist this year. And a lot of people were excited about, also want to shout out to the various other departments, Police Department, Fire Department, service departments who all have to service that sometimes begrudgingly even since it's the Fourth of July. They'd like to get their own picnic with their, with their own families, but it was a nice event. And so I wanted to ship, throw that crude out there. Couple other quick updates, not surprising, should all be aware. Pipeline project continues to proceed in the north end of Blue Ash. It's definitely hanging schedule a little bit, but the good news is they appear to have gotten through the reharkment phase where they're not closing reharkment at night now and not working outside of the roadway. Or at least they always are working outside the roadway. They just need us on the roadway for maneuvering. So that destruction is becoming a little less minimal, but then it'll pick back up when we get down to Summit Park. And it'll probably take some coordination down in that area. You probably saw in the municipal league bulletin that for now, our twenty twenty revenue is safe. I say for now because while the municipal interest throughout the state had prevailed with two court cases, one in Columbus, one down here, our local auditor, Esther Rhodes, filed another court case on a different basis. And so there's a possibility it could be overturned then. And so then we're back to carrying large refunds for twenty twenty. But certainly the trend at this moment is twenty twenty revenue is stable sort of time over, over halfway through twenty twenty-one. We're still trying to figure out whether twenty twenty revenue is stable. I'd like to think we can just give up on that and move on. And then twenty-one will be subject to refunds. And it's gonna, it's gonna require some work on our part. Tax office is gonna be obviously burdened next year trying to wade through all those refund requests and figuring out proportionality and so on and so forth. So we still expect some budget impact for next year. But the good news is if twenty twenty holds, then we're really in a great position. Companies are starting to get called back to work and so on and so forth. So, you know, I feel good about the direction we're heading. We just still have a couple remaining vulnerabilities out there. So we'll, we'll see. And then last, talking about returning normal, tomorrow night, first Friday night concert. We haven't had one in almost two years and because of COVID. And it happens to be one of the big acts, the Neil Diamond, which is always a big one. So and what, from what I've heard from other concerts that I've started, they've been really crowded, really popular, really successful. So I wouldn't be surprised. It's a coming out party tomorrow, Town Square. So you want to get a good seat. Probably need to go a little early and the good news for us is if you've heard of the shit we're talking about ticketing and, and a lot more restrictions and, and gain what have you. Certain Brian's job and the red department's title will be easier the next rest half of the summer as we go through the Friday night concerts. That's all I have there, Mayor.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Peters? I have nothing to make? I have nothing to make, Mayor. Brian Cruz, you have to have some stuff. Thank you, David, for the comments about the Fourth of July. It was great event. And as David referenced, by all means, Fire Department, Police Department, so does make the service. It was really nice to get everybody to kind of get the band back together, put together an event and kind of make lemonade out of lemons. And it was great to see the crowd that we had out there. What we're noticing this summer for sure is regardless of what we're putting on, whether it be a yoga class of two hundred or the farmer's market or the off-market or the Fourth of July is a really good example. Folks are really ready to get back out. And we're starting to see that in some of the other areas as well too. So recreation center usage is back up to about eighty percent, which is really nice to see. And that's compared to twenty thirteen in the average normal year. Golf is doing excellent. Our golf revenues are up about thirty percent, which is great to see. And as David referenced, Friday night concert coming up tomorrow night, which is really nice to get that scheduled back up and running. And then also my deepest condolences to the family. I think it was pretty impressive that you came here to speak tonight. Just wanted to thank you for that. That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update on the Roundabout Project. The utility relocation is still ongoing. We have a contractor. We have to do some environmental reporting on the two former gas stations. So the demolition should begin within the next month or so. And then that's going to be followed by the actual road construction. So our schedules and updates will be posted to our website. So if residents are interested in seeing what's going on, we will post regular updates on that location. And then I wanted to let you know that our paving program will be starting soon, annual paving program. And quick update on the pipeline collapse that we had over behind the Bellas. That project is just, we just began
That project is just, we just began installing the new pipe yesterday. It's going to be a bit of a long process. The pipe is about 40 feet deep. So it's quite an endeavor for us to get that in there. So we anticipate that'll be completed around August. So it's going as well as it can go. Thank you.
Just one clarification. He used the word pipeline. It's a different pipeline than I'm referring to. He's referring to storms.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Storm rage by cutouts from the gas pipeline.
Not to be confused with all the other construction mess going on with the Bellas. So thank you for the clarification, David.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Neil?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Amy?
No, thank you.
Rachel, I saw you too.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counselor?
Friday night concerts. Then I can enjoy after 7:00 PM. It works. It's not very exciting. Right. You sound like joy as well.
Nothing for me. Go.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
My condolences to the family also. But I appreciate your comments. Also, my kudos to our staff for the Fourth of July. Nothing but compliments that my various and broken ground with those drones. I got you. They want them again. So we also have to look for the Salsa Opera starting, is it?
Next week.
Next week. And I even saw a big billboard on Sunday one today promoting it so we're going to see everybody at the opera.
BJ? I have a few things. First thing, I'd like to say congratulations for the Fourth of July program. It was excellent. People. And drone was the, what's it called? Kilo, the eye or something like that. But so it was the best ever anybody has seen. And the second thing I want to talk in that regarding the, regarding the over tower. I'd like to emphasize for the safety. And I do not know how long it takes to decide a deal. But I'd like to propose or I'd like to say we should do it as soon as possible and look it over. And also, somebody, we got an email from, moment from woodland recently talking about hangup of the young people in the park doing all these serious things, normally serious things. So if it's possible for our safety people to make some rounds around our park in the front or in the back. So if you can increase that, then it will be good. So that's, that's what I really like to go and talk about. Try to do as soon as possible. That's all for me.
Again, I'm not getting around to that too much. But when the crimes started during fireworks, there was this flood of gas from the audience. I was right in the middle of it. And it was a great night. The food shop night was, was a lot of fun to see a lot of families together, as packed as it was. It was just two really wonderful events. Off markets tomorrow. Off markets tomorrow for tennis. Again, thank you to the family and condolences. Really appreciate you coming up and sharing your thoughts.
We're going to move into executive session. For economic development assistance, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or with respect to negotiations with other political subdivisions regarding requests for economic development assistance. And for potential impending litigation, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. And for personnel matters, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. After motion, moving into executive session. Move.
Okay.
Jamie, will you please call roll?
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman McColl?
Yes.
Councilman Wonka?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javari?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, everybody.